Are we all set now, Jeremy?
It says we are. My monitor is not showing. I thought we are. My screen. You know what I could, I could do is I could probably go on to YouTube and see if it's actually working.
I just went there. It looks like it's broadcasting.
Oh, it is? Great.
Yeah.
We got the little box in the upper left saying we're live on YouTube.
Yeah.
But you're seeing it on YouTube, actually, Ethan?
I actually am, yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Watching yourself, watching yourself.
I, I have to have myself on screen and in many places as possible.
All right, perfect.
You're like a landlady butter girl.
That's right. We are into now the Camden Planning Board of Thursday, January, the, I'm sorry, February the 3rd. This is a zoning ordinance workshop. There will be a vote taken at the end, so that part, it's not just an informal informal meeting. We first have to set the members of the board. We have two sitting members who are absent. So we're going to have Pat designated from alternate to voting member. And that will give us the requisite five members. Is that five or four? Four?
Yeah, four.
Four. Four. Okay.
Unless Mark Ratner wants to, you know, be a voting.
Honor, honorary. Does that need to be done by vote? I can't recall.
No, I don't think you need to.
I think not, okay.
Just noted in the record.
Not in the record. So the first item on the agenda tonight is whether we have any public comments on non-agenda items.
Nope. Got none.
Okay, I don't see anybody attending the meeting. Jeremy has none.
No.
So, yep, next thing up after that is we need to again extend or at least discuss extending the remote meeting policy. Apparently it expires on 2/16, so I don't think we need to go through this too much. We've done this several times over. My general feeling is that we're getting a pretty decent attendance when we're having actual hearings of substance. And with the Omicron and other matters with COVID, I think remote meetings make perfect sense. So we'll go around quickly unless everybody has it and they want to chime in on that.
I will say Anita mentioned that she agrees kind of moving that forward as well.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote on whether or not to continue remote meetings for another 90 days. Is that right?
Yep. I've actually, you can go out as far as you want, but sure, 90 days is fine. I think we've been doing 60, but whatever you want to do, Ethan.
If we've been doing 60, let's just stick with that. So we'll do it for 60 days and we can always revisit at that point in time. So the motion is to adopt and extend the remote meeting policy for another 30 days, 60 days, sorry, out to April 17, 2022. I'll go around and take a vote. Pat?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Mark? Are you muted, Mark? I didn't hear you.
No, I'm here.
Oh.
Hi.
And that's an eye for me. So we will extend the remote meeting policy for another 60 days. Next up, we have proposed zoning ordinance amendments, hopefully for June. And this is where I will quickly just turn over the meeting to Jeremy and let him discuss each ordinance in turn. Jeremy can now have the floor.
You see the screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
All right, perfect. Good. This first one. This is to amend Article 3 of the zoning ordinance. It's the definition section for cottage. We have not talked about this one, but this one came up very recently with me and the DEP. Shoreland zoning unit on some questions that I had. There was someone, an individual in town that was looking to demolish a house on the ocean and build a new single-family home and then a handful of other, if you will, cottages. Our ordinance defines cottage, and here's the definition in front of you. A dwelling unit designed to be used as a residence during less than six months out of the year, which does not qualify as a dwelling as defined herein. So that's our current definition. And in talking with the DEP, I had questions on whether or not, if you look in the shoreline zoning standards, there are lot development standards of minimum shore frontage required per dwelling unit, minimum lot size per dwelling unit, those kinds of things. And it turns out that our definition of cottage facilitates something that is prohibited under the state shoreline zoning act and guidelines, which we're required to be, meet the state's minimum standards for shoreline zoning. We can go much, we can be as strict as we want in shoreline, in the shoreline zone, but we have to meet their minimum requirements. Our current definition does not meet those current, the current requirements. The DEP in their definitions talks about a dwelling unit being, whether it's year-round or seasonal, is a dwelling unit. And if we permitted this under our definition, current definition, we violate state law and this DEP said they would, for the most part, come after us to address this ordinance and likely appeal of the approval. So so we need to make this change. It's pretty simple. We've just added, and I've worked with DEP, they're happy with this definition. The town attorneys reviewed the definition as well. So we're just gonna, the proposal is to add, delete a period and add a comma, provided, comma, however, in the shoreline overlay zone, a cottage shall meet all of the space and bulk standards of a dwelling unit, including but not limited to lot size and shore frontage per dwelling unit. That's the proposed change and under state law, we have to make this change. So this is kind of why you haven't seen it. It's come up and it's an issue that we needed to resolve. So that's why it's before you. I can take any questions or comments or anything on that one from you folks. So we can put that one behind us. Does that make sense, Ethan? You're muted.
And so I am. Any comments for Jeremy or questions from the board?
Well, in, in reading the the reason behind this is we're trying to make a cottage fall under the requirements of a dwelling unit.
For the purpose of the shoreline zoning, so in the shoreline zone, we are required to count cottages as dwelling units. And the way our ordinance is currently written, we don't count them as dwelling units based on these definitions, our current definition. What this would do is it would say that if you wanted to put a cottage, which is this definition used seasonally, less than six months, you would need to meet the bulk standards as if you were building a regular permanence year-round home. That's the requirement under state shoreline zoning.
Well, it seems like we're overcomplicating that definition because the definition starts as a cottage is a dwelling unit. So then, and we end that sentence by saying that it does not qualify as a dwelling unit. So and then.
I know, I hear, I hear where you're going.
And then explain that, that in shoreline, it will qualify as a dwelling unit. So why don't we just eliminate that, where it says does not qualify as a dwelling unit?
I'm just reading it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the screen.
Well.
Oh. You want to remove does not qualify as a dwelling unit?
Yeah, and wouldn't that just like?
I think it's actually, I hear what you're saying, Mark. I was actually thinking maybe if you start with, instead of the original, you say, instead of a dwelling unit designed to be used as a residence, you say a structure used to be designed as a residence. Because right now it doesn't, doesn't qualify as a dwelling unit in our definitions. And it's only in the shoreline zone that we're required to qualify it as a dwelling unit. So does that work, Jeremy? A structure designed to be used as a residence during less than six months?
Just thinking, I had it in a different, I had it in different language and then the DEP reviewed it. And when I talk more with them and, you know, it's weird, they have to send everything over to the AG's office. And then the town attorney, I had it simpler, which I thought was simpler, but it you know, legalese sometimes, so.
Attorneys, man.
I know, Ethan, you're one of them. I can look, I mean, I have to nail down this language for sure for Monday. So, Mark, I understand what you're trying to say. I will say, this, I'm just thinking about, and it's not in the shoreline zone, and I just want to share this. I think it is oh, might have been the, oh, I forget, the, the change that she demoed half of it up on a fast road. And they're building the house out back in the barn, red barn. I don't remember the name of the hotel now, motel, but there is an issue, they got, they got rid of part of the hotel and then they were wanted to do something different with one of their, I think it was a fourplex and they demoed half of it. And so they have a twoplex in essence. And working with them on how they could rent out that space, but no longer be technically a motel because they're not a motel. They don't want to operate a motel. And, you know, we can have, people can have cottages outside of the shoreline zone and I don't, I don't know. And, you know, you start getting into the dwell, into definitions and, you know, you know, parking is required for dwelling units. There's a whole host of.
Right.
You start tweaking something, you may have to catch something else somewhere else and it's not always easy to make those other catches. If you know what I'm saying.
I mean. To me, the, the key thing, distinction of the, of having the cottage distinction is simply that it's not a full-time resident, but all of the other things that you need to be, whether it's a accessory apartment or whatever, classified as a dwelling unit. And I, I would be wary of removing dwelling unit and say, structure, because then someone could, then we start having an issue where someone creates something and rents it as a cottage, but it really isn't legal and.
Right. I mean, that, you start.
And what we're, and frankly, I mean, if, if we need to do this because DEP wants it and DEP likes this language, then that's kind of.
And, and the way I see it, it also protects those existing cottages and those existing other properties out there that want to have a cottage. If you will, or use a dwelling unit seasonally, because a dwelling unit, if you look at what a definition of dwelling unit is, you know, it's a, it's a eating, drinking, or eating, sleeping, eating, sleeping, living together in a, you know, in a, in a unit. So so I'm on the side of keeping it as is, but I'm, I'm open to changing it if you've got or if I can try to make it cleaner or clearer and to do that by Monday.
So does cottage, a cottage doesn't fall under regulations for for building codes or?
Yeah, it's all, it's all odd because you know, I think someone could say if you're not heating it and you're using it seasonally and it's unheated, then the building codes really change quite significantly. You know, there's no energy code because you're not, you don't have any heating source.
Well, I mean, if it's six months, you're still going to have heat. We are in Maine.
Yeah, I mean, they still need to meet the building code requirements. And the bill talks about dwelling units, that's defined too. So maybe that's part of it, Mark. You know, it's, it's like trying, what we're trying to do with the, not many towns have a definition of cottage, I will say. And so maybe what we were trying to do is trying to ensure that these, there is the ability to have cottages out there that are building code compliant. But they're not used, you know, permanently. And if you look at, I'm just thinking of other places, I'm just trying to think of other places in the ordinance. It's, I think another one would be minimum lot size, because if you're talking about dwellings, it's not a dwelling, right? Does not qualify as a dwelling herein. Yeah, I mean, a dwelling is a building used as living quarters for one or more families. The term dwelling also shall include manufactured housing as defined by state statute as well as and any, and an old mold or mobile home as further defined in the zoning ordinance. So a dwelling. So we're allowing these things to be, you know, these cottages. I don't know, I don't. I've, you know, whatever, I'm trying to make sure we're, state law on this. If there's a way to, Jeannie may have some insight here too. Here she comes. I don't know.
So, all right, so what, what, you have a, you have an in-town lot. And you have, I don't know, a couple little outbuildings, right?
Mm-hmm.
You put some bunks in them and call them cottages. And what's to stop you from doing that?
Well, yeah, I don't think anything really right now, Mark. I mean, but a dwelling, you also gotta like, what's, I mean, I read what the definition of dwelling was. Is there a definition of dwelling unit? And there's a room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as permanent seasonal or temporary living quarters for only one, for only one person or family at a time, containing living, sleeping, toilet and cooking facilities. RVs aren't dwelling units.
So it seems like cottages fall right under that definition, because it includes seasonal, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I hear where you're going, because I mean, those, the definition of dwelling and dwelling unit are different. Living quarters. Well, I don't, it's the same thing though, used as living quarters. Permanent seasonal or temporary living quarters. The definition of dwelling says a building used as living quarters.
Right, so, I mean, a cottage with living quarters for less than six months. But then the definition goes on and explains it that it's not, it doesn't qualify as a dwelling. So it's.
Well, I will say, one of the issue, one of the, I told you this came up in a recent issue.
Yeah.
And this guy was adamant that he was going to put multiple cottages in the shoreline zone, you know, at the 75-foot mark on the ocean, once he demos a house and builds a new house. And he was adamant, and I'm like, you can't, I mean, I can't permit it under, he's, he's a very thorough guy. He reviewed the ordinance. And he says, oh, I can actually, I can do it. And in conversation with DEP, because I know DEP looks at these as dwelling units for lot size. And in this case, the guy had plenty of land area outside of the shoreline zone. But he didn't have the shore frontage per dwelling unit. And I told him, I said, you know, I can't permit it. I'm not going to permit it. We have to change our ordinance. DEP's already said we'd have to change our ordinance and we have a problem. Well, so from there, that's where this ordinance amendment came from, and I've shared that with them. They've, their legal faults reviewed it and I get where you're going. I mean, it is, our ordinances are pretty odd, that, you know, all zoning ordinance have these, you want to clean them up when you can, and I think that's what you're trying to do, Mark, it sounds like.
Well, it is, but I, I think we're I don't know, we're really, I mean, we're, we're solving one small problem and issue that you're dealing with at the moment, but I don't think we're we're overall correcting.
I mean, I think if we want to, if we want to try to correct and figure out really what we want in town, if that's what you're suggesting about these cottages and where to allow them or how this should actually be worded. I, we can do that. What I just need to do is I need to have some language that covers that ensures that the dwell, a cottage, a seasonal residence in the shoreline zone is a dwelling unit under our shoreline zoning ordinance. And this is what the attempt that that was to do.
Well, I mean, you know what, you know what I'm going to be able to do here is I've got, I've got two acres behind my house. I can buy, I can buy six or eight of those cottages from Point Lookout.
Yeah.
And put cottages all behind my house. It's not. They're cottages.
Well, I mean, I hear where you're going, and this is, this is why you always want to look at an ordinance when you're doing it. Making changes is to make sure you're facilitating what you really want to facilitate, you know, the ordinance can facilitate for.
Right. And to, to me, I mean, for me to do that is just not right, but according to the ordinance and what we're doing here, I'd be able to do it.
Well, not what we're doing here, what is in our current ordinance.
What is in our current, correct.
Right, okay, yeah. And I was just.
Saying, you're, you're, you're correcting the, the small situation you're dealing with at the moment, but not the overall
Sure.
issue.
Yeah, I hear you. Do, yeah. You know, I don't know how to.
I mean, if, if you just eliminate that, does not qualify as a dwelling as defined herein. That says a cottage is now a dwelling. Right?
Yep.
And that's across town. It's everywhere.
Yeah.
Like, why, why would we just single out shoreline zoning?
Well, we're, I mean, I hear you, and I just, you know, I don't know the history on this, on the cottage. You know, they're not allowed in every zone. I do know that. Because the one time I had, someone was asked about it, I, you know, so then too, I'm gonna, I'm just looking through the ordinance right now, Mark, to see where village extension allows them. Or you, or CR allows them, and that's where this other gentleman was looking to do it, CR on the ocean.
Yeah.
And then are you two, and I assume are you one does as well?
So.
Are you one does?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to go back to the, to the root of the problem. The definition of cottage is a dwelling unit designed to be used as a residence during less than six months out of the year, which does not qualify as dwelling as defined herein. So you've got, it's a dwelling unit, but it doesn't qualify as a dwelling. But a dwelling unit includes the definition, the definition that it contains living, sleeping, toilet and cooking facilities. Whereas dwelling makes no reference to those two things.
But it does say what, it does say living quarters.
Yeah, I get that part, but I mean.
Yeah.
I don't understand how a cottage can be a dwelling unit, but not a dwelling, based on these two definitions. They're, they're, they're inconsistent in my view. I don't see anything in dwelling unit that doesn't qualify for dwelling. And so.
Hold on, let me go, let me go to the, yeah, keep going. I'm just going to the shoreline zoning section again.
I also searched the ordinance for cottage. And it pops up a few places. But everywhere it pops up, it pops up under the same category as, as single-family dwellings.
You mean allowed where single-family dwellings are?
Yeah, there's no, there's no real.
Not in the village, though.
Oh, no, no, I mean that wherever the cottage appears, it also says single-family dwelling. So why, why do we need even have a category cottages?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, can you, I wish you could search for dwell, but not dwelling unit used together. Can you do that, Ethan?
I don't think so, but I can, I can kind of.
I mean, there's going to be dwelling unit all over the place in the ordinance.
Well, yeah, so dwelling as well too, though.
I mean, I'm certainly, certainly open into fixing this, you know, I mean, that's what we should do.
So, I mean, this individual you're talking about wants to put cottages in.
Yeah.
Because he's in the shoreline, doesn't he need what, DEP approval?
Excuse me, um, yeah, you need, you need DEP approval for, this is the dilemma. You have, he would need a permit by rule, NRPA permit for doing, well, no, he won't need a permit because he's going to be outside of the 75 feet. So DEPs are only applicable for the, within 75 feet of high water of the resource. In this case, unless there's wetlands there, which I've been to the site, I don't think there are any wetlands that I visibly saw. So the permit that he would get would be for soil disturbance or work within 75 feet. He's staying out of that because that's a setback. They don't get a permit for DEP for anything, anything there and DEP, you know, even if he was doing work in the 75 feet, they'd issue the permit regardless, even if it shoreline zoning wouldn't facilitate it because they don't regulate shoreline zoning. They don't even review them. Those are, those are for municipalities to review. He wouldn't, he wouldn't need a permit on this from the DEP.
Who is it that's telling you this doesn't fit the state ordinance?
The shoreline zoning coordinator from the.
Shoreland.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and they have three staff in the state or three or four. He's the coordinator, he's in Augusta, he's the one who manages the shoreline zoning unit. I mean, I can talk to Bill, our, our town attorney, and see if we can try to clean, I mean, we need to just, the, the intent that we need to, we need to ensure is that this the shoreline zoning, you know, areas addressed. And if there's another way to do it by deleting, does not qualify or however we can do that, and then we can have a further discussion in the coming months on what is a cottage and do we really want them everywhere? And, you know, do we need to change this definition? We can do that. Either way. I, either way.
So what, uh? What does the shoreline al- allow? Are, are they space and bulk standards and?
Yeah, yeah. And I can tell you what those are, and so they're actually, we're a little more restrictive in the C R, not on sewer. I think we're up at sixty thousand square feet, right? Or forty thousand, sorry, forty thousand. Um, in the C R. And. Um, the shoreline zoning on tidal waters is thirty thousand. Minimum per dwelling. Um, and a hundred and fifty feet of shore frontage. And so this gentleman had like two hundred and seventy five feet of shore frontage. Um, but he has, you know, handful of acres over there. And so he could on his lot size, because he's got so much land. He could build them. You know, further up. Um, away from, away from outside the shoreline zone. Um, in this case.
But he doesn't want to.
But he doesn't want to, no. He wants to put him at that seventy five foot mark, which is the setback.
So he would, if, if he followed shoreline zoning ordinance. He, he would, it, it would, it, it would limit the number of cottages.
The number of cottages and, um, in the shoreline zone, yes. Because you have to count the area of land in the shoreline zone. When they say thirty thousand square foot lot, I think, I think his lot's six acres or something. Um, but when you jam them up, it's only like two hundred and fifty feet wide, and then it opens to the water, right? Um, a little bit more. Um, so you'd have to have, you know, I think he was talking for full on dwelling units down in the shoreline, like in that shore, in the shoreline zone. Um, and when you add that up of. You know, um, the thirty thousand square feet per lot, you know, per, per dwelling. Um, that's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and he would technically need a hundred and fifty times four. Um, that five hundred. Six hundred, um, feet of shore frontage, and he's well below that, he's at less than three hundred. And he has nowhere near enough land in the shoreline zone to put these. Um, you know, if he was much wider at the shore and, you know, might have had a much bigger area in the shoreline zone, he could probably do it, but he just doesn't.
Well, but this is a, uh. Sort of a mouthful, more. More difficult than I had hoped that this first agenda item would be, but. My feeling, my feeling is that Mark's right, that we don't want to introduce more confusion into the ordinance. And, um, I want to get things moving forward. I realize that we kind of have to do this in a sense. Um, but I'm, I'm. Going to ask you to go back, or at least I'm going to propose asking you to go back and. Look over the definition of cottage. Uh. And the, uh.
Yeah.
Dwelling and dwelling unit, to try to square those three definitions with what appears in this part of the definition.
Yeah.
Um. Because I, I don't want to, I agree with Mark, I mean, you know, when I read it the first time, I was like, oh, okay, no big deal. But then if you read it more carefully, it's, it's true that it just keeps referring back to itself almost, and it's not, it's not helpful.
Totally get it. I will, I will do that, and I will say, I don't think. Um, I mean, I understand where you guys are going, and I think we can, um. Figure out something that. Fixes this, um, I have to have some language done on Monday, that said, and that's really for the select board to schedule their, us to have our hearing. In two weeks or whatever, and then the select board will hear it. It can change, it, it can't be significant changes that change the, the intent of it. So I think I understand where you guys are going. I can get some. Language to you probably Monday. Um, and if you can just get some comments back to me individually, if that kind of addresses thoughts and concerns, I'll do that.
Yeah, and I think it's for.
Why you just share information back and forth, though, because we're supposed to do that?
I mean, I, what I'm, what I'm still stuck on, yeah, I get that part. Um, what I'm still stuck on is what is the, what is the benefit or need? To have cottage in the ordinance at all.
Right. Yeah.
And do we want to do that?
Because dwelling unit already facilitates them because it says you can, it's seasonal or permanent, right?
Yeah.
Right.
That's, that's the part that confuses me altogether.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but I'm just thinking in. In history.
Yeah.
Uh, before, before the town was really developed to where it is now. There were a lot of cottages.
Sure.
And since then, they've been, they've been. Um, updated. The year round. Uh, but there are, I mean, there still are cottages on the lake.
Yeah.
But those are considered dwelling units under ordinance, right? Right, they have to be.
Yeah, the part that I just can't, I can't understand is a dwelling unit. Which does not qualify as a dwelling.
Yeah.
If I, I think that. What that refers to is like, if you have a, a place on the lake and you build a little bunkhouse. As Mark suggested earlier, like you to get a, and you. You know, it is a, like, it's a badly worded phrase, it should be. An accommodation which is not a dwelling unit. Because you could have something, like, you need to have something that allows for. A structure designed for people to. Sleep or live in, not a full developed dwelling unit as defined. By having cooking bathroom and other facilities. So, if there.
You just said an accommodation which, which. Is a dwelling unit.
Right, but I, I, like, do, like, it almost needs to be something that. What we, what it says is it's not a dwell, it's not a dwellify, it's not a dwelling unit as defined in our definitions. But it serves a purpose for people to live in, so you need to have something that if somebody says. I'm going to build a two room. Structure that has a bedroom and a sitting room. It doesn't have a bathroom, it's not on sewer, but what, what is that? And someone is going to stay in, like, that's a cottage, I think is what this.
Yeah, I don't, that's not, that, I hear that, but I, I'm going back to what the definition actually says for cottage, and it says a dwelling unit designed. Et cetera.
Right.
Which is not qualified as a dwelling.
But my point was. My point was to why do we have, why should we have cottage? In, in here as a definition, I think, I think that that needs to be rephrased to say. An accommodation unit or something.
But that's not the definition of dwelling unit. Or, you know, cottage saying that, that the definition of cottage says it's a dwelling unit. And then the dwelling unit says. Everything that needs to be in there. Um. Seasonal, permanent seasonal or temporary living quarters. Um. But then it says and contain living, sleeping, toilet and cooking, and that's where it accepts what you're talking about. That's the, that's the difference, right? Because you're talking about maybe a bunkhouse that doesn't have a toilet or cooking facilities. I don't see that, that the. I don't see that the definition is actually envisions cottages that way.
I don't either.
And I'm not sure, and I'm not sure that, and I'm, I think the, the focus on the cottages was the seasonal aspect. And I think what happened here is that something got. Amended or added, and the cottage was just left in there. And it became. Uh, inconsistent with the rest of the ordinance.
Likely.
If something changed later.
I think that's likely what happened, would be my guess.
So, and so I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to sort of like the, what if we just eliminate cottage?
Well.
But where does the bunkhouse that, that Chris was proposing fall then, under the order?
I can, I can answer that. We would call that, I mean, we've permitted those. Um, in essence, a bunkhouse, which is, you know, somewhere where people can sleep and hang out. But it is not a place where people cook. Um, because that's what a dwelling unit is, right? I mean, that, you know, it's where you, you cook, you. You, was it cooking, sleeping toilet, you got all, you have to have all of those. So we do permit today, you know, well, if someone came in. This, if this guy, this guy, for instance, he's maybe tweaking his thinking, and it may just do a bunkhouse with two bedrooms in it. And has no kitchen facility, so you cannot cook in it. Um, which then doesn't qualify as a dwelling unit.
Yeah, and bunkhouse also does not show up anywhere in the ordinance.
No.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying.
It shows up.
My thought was more to say that cottage should stay, when I was responding to. The idea of removing cottage, and I was thinking that we should leave it in so that it does give some. Definition for a, a bunkhouse type structure. Not so much, I wasn't really thinking about where it came from, I was just thinking about why, why should it be there?
Well, we would call, we would just, I mean, when we permit these already, these bunkhouses, if you will. We call them either accessory or exist, you know, living space. And we don't permit them as dwelling units, um, you know, we look at their plans, they get a C of O. And it says what it is, you know, two bedrooms or whatever, it's not a dwelling unit.
Right, I mean, and so accessory structure is defined as a subordinate structure that is detached from the principal structure. The use of which is incidental to that of the principal structure.
Right.
So the idea there is if you're staying in a bunkhouse. You're going to the bathroom somewhere, probably in the principal structure.
Yeah, and if you read it, you see kind of. Continues what you're saying there, Ethan.
Yeah, so I, I'm still, I'm still back to just eliminating cottage from our ordinance.
See, I think what we're doing is setting off track here. All right, we're trying to. We're trying to. Make a cottage an accessory structure. But the primary word there in the definition of cottage is a residence.
No, 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 we're not trying to make a cottage an accessory structure, we're trying to make a bunkhouse an accessory structure.
Well, I know, but.
Because I think the definition of cottage has changed over time. That's just my guess here, but I don't know what the benefit of having cottage in the ordinance is because. We think of cottages as seasonal structures, that's my guess, at least that's how I think of it, as a seasonal structure, not relevant. It, to me, is whether or not it has a kitchen or a bathroom, but that's maybe relevant to others. So if, if there's a seasonal structure that has a bathroom and a kitchen, then it's a, then it's a, then it's a, a dwelling unit. If it's a bunkhouse that people just are crashing in and it's sleeping quarters only. And that main house provides the kitchen and the bathroom facilities or whatever else, or however that's supposed to work. Then that would be an accessory structure with an accessory use to the main structure. And then what is it, where I looked through the ordinance and cottage shows up in here, nowhere does it have any substantive meaning other than it's allowed in certain zones. But the only substantive meaning seems to be that it's a, uh, a seasonal structure, but. Our dwelling unit definition allows for a seasonal structure, and I'd rather regulate them as a full dwelling unit and not as some sort of exempt entity. And if, if we eliminate cottage, my guess is, going back to the initial thing here. If we didn't have the definition in there, we don't need to clarify it.
Right.
And D P doesn't have a problem with it, and where, where do we have cottage, where is the benefit of? You know, explain to me what cottage means. Under the ordinance if it's not a dwelling unit.
Um, I concur with you on that, Ethan, I think that's a good summary of what you, what it all is about.
I mean, that's almost like Occam's razor, what's the simple thing, just cut the definition out and then we don't have to change anything.
True.
And, and complicate everything.
True.
And then Mark's, I think satisfied, although he looks skeptical, but you don't have this confusing definition for cottage. And I'm sorry, Mark, if you can put the, put on hold your plan to buy seven cottages from point lookout.
Not my plan, I wouldn't want to do that, and I, you know, I'm just saying, that wouldn't be right.
Well, they don't have bathroom, they don't have kitchens anyway.
Yes, they do.
The little ones don't.
You have kitchenettes. Kitchenettes and a bathroom.
I mean, my feeling is that, if, unless it's strictly a bunkhouse. And we're talking about like li- literally a shelter that has bedrooms in it, no plumbing.
Yeah.
If it's a bunkhouse, fine, exempted from being a dwelling unit. But if it's got anything more than that, and it's got a bathroom or a kitchenette or a kitchen, we want to regulate as a dwelling unit.
Well, I think you need to, I think you need to look at it from, um. It contains cooking, sleeping and toilet facilities, so you have to have all of those together, right?
Right, but is a hot plate a cooking facility?
Well, um, we're, we're in the process of, we're dealing with that all the time, on, on, what people have done in some cases is. They have turned these accessory structures that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Into, they bring microwaves, they bring a hot plate in. Uh, and then we found that happening, and so we're dealing with that when we find out about those, because that's a, that's a whole nother, whole nother can of worms. Um.
But you want to treat those as a dwelling unit if they start doing that sort of thing.
Cooking.
That's my perspective on it, I mean, the only, the only issue here is oversight, really, right? I mean, it, it's, it's, you know, meeting codes and things like that, safety. Um, you know, it, it may be easier for somebody to say, oh, I could just plumb cottages anywhere I want if I don't put a kitchen in it. That's not what I'm looking for. From a planning perspective, I'd rather have some, some review of those, whether it's by the code enforcement officer or by the planning board itself.
Yep. I say get rid of the definition. To be honest. Because it's, it's, you're right, the only place in the definite, in the ordinance is the definition. And where it's permitted.
Yeah.
If, if the residential dwelling, if the dwelling unit definition. Already says. It's seasonal. They're seasonal, then we're good. That's my take.
When you guys were talking about bunkhouses, do, do we have to add a definition for bunkhouses then?
No, because we would use that, it's, we'd like Ethan to saying, that's how we handle those now. Three accessory living space or accessory structure. Um, that is, because if you look, again, those definitions. Um, coordinate structure that's detached from the principal structure, the use of which is incidental to that of the principal structure. And then if you get to use, it talks about. Um. Clearly incidental, the principal use subordinate in area extent or purpose. To the principal use being served, and that contributes to the comfort, convenience or necessity of that principal use. It is the same lot, so certainly having a bunkhouse with, you know, handful of bunks in it is going to. Contribute to comfort, convenience of that principal use is how I would see it.
Okay.
I mean, we, we permit them that way, and D P has no problem with it, they do need to permit, those bunkhouses are permitted. From a septic perspective, the plumbing inspector, um, the inspector has to review those because they have to. Tweak the, you know, the, the septic system has to be. You know, may have to be expanded.
For the main house.
For the main house to serve this, yeah.
Yeah, if they, if they increase the number of beds.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not the same as a bedroom, technically, because, um, it's subordinate. In house.
Okay, um, go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, I think that getting rid of cottage altogether is the way to go.
Okay. Mark, I want to bring you over to our side.
Yeah.
What can we do for you?
I, I agree, but I'd like to, uh, before we do that. I'd like to know if there are any. Cottages that in town that this affects.
Right.
Well, I mean, if we remove cottage, you know, anything that's in existence right now is already in, you know, is grandfathered, I would think, under that. That existing ordinance, um. I don't.
If someone wanted to do a, a, a new. Seal dwelling unit, they could do it. Right?
Yeah. So I guess I would run that by Bill and, and see if he's, he's it that way.
Alright, that sounds good.
I mean, if, does the rest of the board agree? I don't want anybody to, I don't want to just pull those that through. Mark, you in agreement?
Oh, yeah, I, I think it makes sense.
Okay, Pat.
Yeah.
Okay, and I saw Chris already giving thumbs up, so that's, I think that handles number two there, Jeremy, or number one, there, Jeremy.
Alright. Alright, number two. Um, this is, we've talked about this, this is just another D P requirement. Um, that the legislature passed a ye- year or so ago, maybe a little bit longer, and it was, took a while for the state to get it out to us. Um, there is a requirement now to have photographic record, um, of. Um. You know, projects in the shoreline zone, that's before and after the project, um, takes place. And they use development, um. And D, again, D P, um, reviewed this, um, for consistency with the law, and they said it works perfect. That is what the law says. Um, I've added things about, you know, supporting materials. You gotta submit, you gotta submit a requisite fee as maybe determined by the select board. Um. So those things are all in there, but the language, the 20 days is right, um, and the. Yeah, everything is the correct language. Nothing we can change really on that one. Any questions or comments? Anyone?
I don't have anything on that.
Pretty straightforward.
All right.
Well, I, I don't either, you know, I, I think that, um. It makes sense to photograph stuff, you know, before and after because.
Yeah, here.
Hey, yeah.
My take on this is that DEP, they're required to do, um, when you do a project in the shoreline zone and get, or in a. Project that requires an NRPA permit, not a resource protection act permit from the state. You're required to take photographs too and send them. My gut says is that just knowing DEP staff and how operate there, they're not getting them. Um, and so they're push this on us to get them. That's my gut, but I think it's a good. Um, it makes perfect sense and we have to do it, so.
Yeah.
Moving on, yeah.
Very.
Uh, this one is amending article six, non-conformant section four, non-conforming structures, one. Um, and we had talked about this, um. How to handle, um, our, our ordinance, um, in order to facilitate the changes in the village extension and the village when we looked at the lot sizes. Um, and so this amendment would allow existing single family homes. On existing non-conforming lots of record to be converted into two family dwelling. In the village and the village extension if they're on sewer. And, um, that's what that does. Um, it allows them to, when we taught, when we get down into like the village extension and the village and we tweak these lot size requirements. Um, you somehow want to make sure that you can allow those what you're allowing, um, by ordinance and. This non-conforming, it just make that it is not considered or non-conforming, um, an increase in the non-conformity.
And these are sewer lots only.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and this even applies to, it would be considered, technically it would be considered an expansion and non-conforming use. One has a very large, single-family home and they want to do no addition. They just want to divide the building into two dwelling units. That would be an increase in the non-conformity. And we wanted to make sure people had that ability to do that. Because we're not allowing, you know, because we're opening up lots to have one and two family homes.
Right.
Any thoughts or questions? And I, again, these have been run by town attorney. Um, this is the language that we felt actually addressed the issue.
Yeah, it's perfectly legal east.
I think it's a nice catch.
Anyone else? Good?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Uh, uh, next one is amend article eight, section seven, village extension, article four, part one. Um, these amendments would allow multi-family dwellings on lots in the village extension district served by public sewer. And two, it would allow two family dwellings on sewer lots without an increase in lot size per dwelling unit. That's similar to what we did for the village, village district. Um, and then three, it would reduce the minimum lot size for lots without public sewer from forty thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet. Again, that's consistent with the state's minimum lot size and what we've chatted about before multiple times. And number four, um, I don't know, about this a lot, I think I mentioned it. But, um, this would increase the maximum building coverage for those lots from ten thousand or from 10% to 25%. And if you go to the table. Um. Yeah, so if you don't have a sewer, right? So before when lots were forty thousand square feet. And, um. Um, we had it at 10, 10%. So you, your buildings on that lot could cover four thousand square feet. That's all buildings. That's whether it be a shed and a building is defined in our ordinance is something that has a roof. Very, it's very all-inclusive, um, definition. So that's for shed. A horse barn, a chicken, chicken barn, chicken coop, someone's garage. Um, you know, all of that and their.
That doesn't include driveway.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, there is none, no ground coverage, um, for general, it's just building coverage. Um. And so rather than, you know, this gets it down to. Um, or it. It allows someone, when we shrink the lot size down to twenty thousand, if we kept that at 10, it would just mean you could have two thousand square feet of building on the property and I just, that doesn't. Doesn't seem right. It's pretty limiting. Um, so the 25% gets you close to where you were before at the four thousand or whatever. Any thoughts or comments on that?
No.
No, this has been gone over, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, I will just note that, of course, when you do the, if, if you do decide to eliminate the cottage definition, you need to also remove every reference to it.
Yes, sir.
Like in this section here. I think it only appears about five or six times, so it's not a lot, but.
No, it's just village extension, RU1, CR, you too, I think.
I'm still not comfortable with a twenty thousand square feet. Brought that up when we first talked about this and that's why I suggested. We, we keep it at forty thousand and, and call it. Single family and two family. And so then we'd allow two family on a forty thousand square foot lot. But we'd also protect the single families. At a forty thousand square foot lot. But, you know, that's seems to not be.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, but you, you've, you've summed it up perfectly, Mark. I think that, um. We, we considered the meeting that you were not here, the, your issue with that, and I think the board. Uh, felt and voted that they, or at least we, you know, straw pull or whatever. That, um, that we were comfortable with a twenty thousand, um, square foot. Lots for non, for sewer lots. Um. So I think that may be just a matter of, of a disagreement.
Yeah.
Um. You know, on, on balance, so, uh, you're, I think you're free to object or you're both negative, but, um. I think, I think that we've gone over this enough that I, that the rest of the board is comfortable with the twenty thousand square foot lot size.
Yep. So, um. It should be not permitted, just so you know, this, this. There, not permitted.
So just a spelling, spelling check.
Yeah.
Uh, a number 10, multifamily dwellings.
Uh-huh.
Uh, your explanation there should be replacing, replace existing. Or, it, it says we're closing exit in number 10, but.
Oh. Oh, it says existing on what I'm looking at.
Same for mine.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Does it on yours? I mean, there's multiple copies sometimes that get around and. It does?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, all right. Um. And again, on this one, we multifamily on sewer, we went down from seventy-five hundred per dwelling unit to five thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Again, that's on sewered, on sewers.
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're just, we're adding multifamily dwellings.
Oh, we are, certainly. They were, they were allowed previously as open space developments.
Okay.
Um, and I just felt like, what if someone just wants to do a, a unit, you know? Um, we, in the village on, the village extension on sewer, the con plan supports this stuff. I will tell you, I mean, I can share, stop sharing this and share you the screen of the, the, the village extension. Most of the village extension, a great percentage of the area, a great, significant amount of the area is in subdivisions. So that, those are really kind of tied up probably from doing any expansions like that. Um. Let me, I'm going to stop the share on this. Do you guys want me to stop this share and show you the sewer map?
It's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Um. We find it. All right, let me get down here. So we see where we are. All right, do, do people kind of recognize where we are in town? Um, this is, if you, I maybe I can zoom in there and then move this a little bit, but. So this is the village extension in town, right? This is tired. And I'm sorry, this doesn't show you everything, but this would be, um, you know, CR along here, we got the village, B1 and. CR out here and RU2 and RU1 out here. Um, and same out here, um, this is all village. And then, so this is the village extension and it, for the most part, runs along the river. Um, as you can see that on both sides of the river between the village and the more rural areas. Um, as you can see, going out, here's Mountain Street 52, Turnpike Drive. Um, there is no sewer there. Um, so none of this areas, it would work, right? Um, for, um. To get down to do multifamily, um. This is the area that's all sewered, um.
Sure.
But then in Lantern and Sweetbrier, here's Cobb Road. Um, Hofstes Drive, Washington Street. So you've got some air, some lots that are not in subdivisions. Um, that are along Washington Street that are sewored. Uh, and then you come across here, uh, Riverside Drive as well.
Are the, are the, is the darker lines indicating sewer or is that just?
Yes, I'm sorry. The purple is sewer in the entire.
See, I don't see color on it, but.
Oh, you don't?
Not, not great color, but this is. If I, if I squint, I can see it.
Yeah, you see my cursor, right?
I do, yeah, I'm following, yeah.
This is all, that is all the sewer that is in the village extension.
Okay.
Um, and this would be the river. Right, here's Riverside Drive. Um, and Washington Street Hofstes.
Yep.
This is all subdivision, so like, need to tweak their subdivision approvals to figure that out and there's. You know, there's also deed restrictions on numbers of units, uh, dwelling units and family homes. So it, not a lot of town can benefit from that. Um, but I'm just throwing it out there. I think we should, we've talked about it, try to facilitate when we can.
Yep.
That's all. So can I stop sharing?
Sure.
All right. And I'll go back to share the other. Uh, see, this happens to me. Sometimes it disappears. All right, I found a different one, so just.
Does it say exiting?
That's good, Mark. I mean, Ethan, sorry, that is funny. Um, I'm going to stop sharing this and try to find my, what I had again. Um. Yeah. Getting the hang on these, these sharings, it's a little more complicated sometimes than it needs to be. Um, all right. So, sorry for flying through there. That's village extension. And this is the table, this is the table, again, what we have to tweak in order to facilitate the, um, reduce lot sizes. Um. And then we get into the village, uh, and again, this section, all this does is would allow two family homes and lots in the village. Without requiring an increase in lot size per dwelling unit and would also reduce lot size per dwelling unit from all that dwelling. From seventy-five hundred to five thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Um. Here you go. This is the changes that are needed for that. And that's all. Any thoughts or questions or comments on those? Good?
All good.
All good. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Another, um.
Hold on, Mark, do you want to say something there?
Sorry.
Long as you ask for a comment, I'm just gonna express my. Concern again, I think we're focusing on developing. And creating more density in town. And we're not. We're not looking at. At protecting existing residents and their open space. And their property values and, and if you have. You know, I think that's what zoning. In, in, in important aspects of zoning is to protect neighborhoods and property owners and. And I think we're more focused on. On creating development than we are on protecting what we have.
I, I think that's a fair, a fair way to put it, Mark. I mean, I think. There are various competing. Um, directives from the town plan. The, the town plan doesn't say protect owner's property values. It says, um, you know, uh. Look for ways for, to, to further development and, but keeping a character with the neighborhoods. And I understand. The concern that, um, that this is, is, is somewhat of a significant change. But then I look at the way that this can be applied and where the sewer runs and everything, and we're just talking about. A pretty small number of lots, and that's just which are, which, which could opt into this. And then you're thinking about how many people are going to actually avail themselves of this. And we're just trying to give, I mean, this has been kind of our, our, um, birdshot approach to. To, you know, affordable housing and, and housing density. Is to try to look at as many different things as we can that, that will not drastically affect the character of neighborhoods. But will allow for some opportunities to afford more, provide more housing. Um, and, and whether it's affordable or not is not something that we're, we're, uh. Dictating at this point, but I think the idea is that is, you know, you provide more options, at least there's a chance. Um, there's no magic wand away with this whole problem. Um, I see the, personally, I see the impact is actually fairly minimal. Um, I don't think you're going to see a bunch of twenty thousand square foot lots popping up all over the place. But I acknowledge that in your, in your view, that could, realistically, it could happen. You know, I mean, if we're, if we're authorizing it, we have to look at it as though it's possible that every single lot. That is, uh. Big enough, forty thousand square feet could divide, you know, could put two. Dwellings on that lot. And every single lot, then it's twenty thousand square feet could also do that. And if people were, you know, and, and for me. Um, that's something I can live with. Um, it, the question for each individual board member is whether they can. And whether they think that's in the best interest of, of the town in general. And so, um, you know, again, I think your objection is noted and, um, well, we, we've gone around on this. And my feeling is the rest of the board is pretty firmly in the camp of. This is the direction that they want to go, but I don't want to necessarily speak for everybody. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I just wanted to comment, I appreciate, I mean, I, I kind of agree with both you, you know, the zoning ordinance is, is there to protect, but it's also there to facilitate. But I wanted to just remind you that the, there are building, maximum building coverage in the village. And in the village extension that we're not changing. Um, and so. You know, we're at twenty-five percent to your lot can be covered with building in the village and the village extension. And we're not tweaking that. So, and we also have a provision that says about ground coverage. Uh, provided that the area between the front property line and the wall of the building or structure closest to the street. Uh. Should not be used for parking. So we have this. We have some protections when you look at, you know, open space and the area. I mean, I will say, I live in Belfast. They don't have any building coverage max in the downtown village. Here, and I, we are suffering from it immensely because they're just building, building, building. And that water has to go somewhere and it's going on to the butters and we in Camden at least have this lot coverage percentage. Um, I think is pretty, is pretty, pretty good, um, in, in. What the space looks like, um, and the open area. So, you know, you're not, again, I think Ethan's right, you're not going to get a, a. Very large buildings covering some of these, you know, ten thousand square foot lots or twenty thousand square foot lots. Cause we have these lot coverage requirements that are in place in the ordinance that I think do try to protect. That open space and give a sense of. You know, neighborhoods and, and, and that kind of thing. So I, I, I. I, I respect both, I respect you, Mark, I, I really do, and on this topic, and Ethan, I, I think you nailed it, um. You know, it is, it's, I think the ordinance tries to balance all that stuff and, and I think we still are balancing it by having, maintaining these lot coverage requirements.
Thanks, Jeremy. I saw, Chris, oh, your hand went up.
Yeah, I, I just was going to say, I mean, Jeremy's hit some of the points I made, um, and, you know, I mean, Mark, your comments are certainly valid. Um, but I think when we looked, when we really looked at it, you know, it's, it's not. It's a relatively small number of lots that would even. Qualify for this for an additional structure. Uh, but there are a number of houses that could be. Eggs that are existing that could be modified and split. Into two units that this would allow. Uh, in the village that wouldn't change anything. Um, I think that's one of the reasons that I think this is a really good step forward. That's all.
Yeah.
So Jeremy, is this, this isn't one we need to vote on, is it?
Um, I mean, these are all, you know, we're going to have to vote to send these things to voter, um, to, to a hearing, so yeah, we're going to need to vote on all of these.
Okay, just, so all in, in total, not?
Yeah, my, my thought. My, um, Genie would probably say individually. Um, but if you're comfortable with all of them, you could say the slate of them, one through whatever. Or you can pull out the cottage since, well, we're going to delete that, so yeah, you'd have to do. The slate of proposed amendments, number one through. Um, whatever number we have, I think we have six going, seven going. Oh, we did seven. Do you want me to touch on six again, Ethan? Did I do that?
Well, I just, I just was trying to get clear, Genie, are you going to want us to vote on each individual one, or is it okay if we do a summation vote?
She may not be here.
She shows she's here, but she's not, she's muted. Maybe not.
Um.
Well, we haven't discussed them all yet, have we?
Yeah, we have.
No.
There were six and seven yet to go.
You want to get to the next one?
Yeah, let's go right ahead then.
Um. I think we started village or did we finish village? I think I thought we did.
Finished village, yes.
Okay.
Um, lots of structures.
Yeah. Um. So this is another shoreline zoning issue that is, um. Consistent with the DEP requirements when determining, so you have this whole. This is all existing already. Multiple structures if more than one resident dwelling unit or a single. One principal government institutional structure. Or use is constructed or established on a single parcel, all dimensional requirements shall be met for each additional dwelling unit or principal structure or use except for dwelling units. Or commercial or industrial structures located in the B one, BR and Harbor just. Harbor Business, when determining whether dimensional requirements are met, only land area within the shoreline zoning shall, shoreline zone shall be considered.
So Jeremy, can you?
Yes, sir.
Refresh my memory here, um. Didn't we eliminate the River Business District?
No.
Combine it?
No, we eliminated, um, River Business is the Tannery, um, and going up Mount Batty Street. Um. We eliminated the transitional business, um, river.
Right, oh, yeah, 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 okay. T, yeah, TRB, I think it was.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, that's cool. Yep. That's what that is. Um, seven, I, we just. Didn't include this, I mean, I was trying to get together a package to the select board and, um. Or eventual, um. For them to hear these things and this, we already did, we did a hearing on this. Erosion control. That's what this is. Um. I will say I've tweaked it a little bit, um, and that there's a reason behind this. Um. Get to it. Um, the, the select board added discussion the other night on approval of. Permit fees and town fees, there is a, a discussion on. Planning and code fees and, because I'm updating some of them. Um. And I think everyone, uh, you know, can see, uh, I, I see it often. Not in Camden as much as I see it elsewhere, but I see construction sites without erosion controls. Um. And enforcement is a challenge and when we are. Permitting a project, we require a number of inspections, lots of inspections for a, a house project or a shoreline zoning project. Um. Their intent is to add, they wanted an erosion control inspection. To occur and a fee to go along with it because it's something that. Um, you know, when people are, as with all fees, they're there to, to, to try to. Um, you know, pay for, in essence, the work that goes into that permit and the inspect, pay for the inspections, pay for the time, that staff time that does that. Um. And so what I've proposed to do, um, is. Um, in number three. And I don't think it says here yet. Um, I will add after begins, for projects that require permits. An inspection of the erosion control measures is required. Before the permitted project can move forward. A fee for that inspection shall be paid prior to permit issuance. That's being added to number three here. Um, and.
The little I three?
Yeah. It's going to go right there, I mean, I could type it if you wanted to, but it says for projects that require permits. An inspection of the erosion control measures is required before permitted projects can move forward. And it says they have to pay for an inspection being.
Okay.
Um.
Any discussion from the board? Uh, Mark looks like he's wearing a lampshade.
He started the party.
Well, it's not party time yet.
Yeah.
So are we supposed to go ahead and approve something like that before it's even written out for us?
Um, it's tech, technically, I mean, it's fairly interesting, the laws, courts have changed over the years on how they, um, rule these things. They expect, you know, you, you have a public hearing. And your language is the language that you have at public hearing, but then you have a public hearing. People are providing comments. Um, do you need to have another public hearing? With those comments that, you know, everyone's talked about what needs to happen because concerns people talked about an issue or whatever and the. Decide whether it be the planning board or the select board. Yeah, I mean, the intent's the same, uh, but we want to change some wording. You know, they used to call it de minimis, it's kind of expanded a little bit beyond that, um. You know, where you could just tweak a word here or there, uh, but reality is, um, case law in recent years is. That there's kind of an expectation that the public hearing is going to direct some change. Um, in, in how the language reads, and so. If you guys don't do anything with this. It's going to the select board with the language changed. Uh, because it's for the most part, everything in essence is the, the same intent is to ensure erosion control. Um, measures are in place and operational and functioning throughout a project from the beginning to the end. Um, so technically it could go right back to the select board without, um, you guys doing anything with it. Um, with the change, but. I, Genie and I both felt that, um, it should, uh. That with you, I will say the select board, um, because they did have a discussion on this already. Before they set, or said, sending the public hearing, they wanted this section to go away. Um, section does not apply to agriculture as defined under Maine Agriculture Protection Act. I think it's one of those other things that, um. Don't put it in the ordinance if you don't need it. Um, it already, we cannot regulate ag erosion on, on a farm. Um, already, it would be. You know, uh, the Department of Ag has to do that, so. Um, they wanted that gone just again to kind of make sure not to add things we don't need, um. I kind of like the language in there, but it, we don't.
Uh, you like it because that was what tanked it last time with the select board. Right? I mean, that, it, you know, they can't have both.
Yeah. Yeah.
If they, if they want to raise that as an objection and tank it, tank it, um, then, then we've got to put it in to say this is not applying. I mean, I don't know what, you can't have both.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
I, I'll play, I like it in there because it, it just clarifies it for.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Let, let me add one thing. One person on the select board wanted it removed, not everybody, and it, we, it's not something we took a vote on, I like the language as well.
We won't, we won't refute the actions of one person to the entire board, Mark, thank you.
I should have been clearer on that, Mark, you're right, it's true. Sometimes the conversation get. You know, focused in one way and not everyone gets to have a, have their, their. What they want to say, so. I get it. I'll keep it in. Um, do you guys want to, um. Go with the slate of them, um, and I guess I could probably, since it was part of the. Part of this workshop, um. Like, I'll just mention it to the board, select board that we're keeping that, the board wanted to keep that in there. Uh, are you ready to set a hearing for, um? You know, we could actually set the hearing for even. Roll again next week with this language in it, so we reinforce it to the select board if you want. Uh, next week, two weeks. Does that make?
The next meeting, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep it in and just do another hearing with it?
Yeah.
All right, I'm down with that. I think it's important language, um. All right, you want to take these one at a time, Ethan?
Well. I, I'd almost suggest that, that we make a motion to forward. Forward these changes to the select board. With the intention of removing the definition of cottage.
Okay, keep in mind, we're having a, this is a workshop and we have, we have to schedule a public here.
This is, this is recommending them to hearing.
Yeah, so we still have to go to a hearing for this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's really where we're at, so we just need a motion to set this for public hearing. And then, uh, go forward from there, right?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do it, uh, one by one personally, I'm, I'm comfortable doing it as a slate.
Do we want, do we want to include the, um?
Oh, maybe we should do them one by one because Mark has an objection to at least one of them, so I would think it's probably better to go.
Well, I voiced my opinion and I, you know, I'll go along with the board.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm not, it's, you're certainly free to, to dissent, but.
No, I, I was also going to ask if we want to make, we could do some, we could do a slate for all of them except. Article three. Or do we want that to go to hearing as well? Which article three, if we're moving, if we're suggesting that we. Are just removing cottage from the.
That's kind of go to hearing too. I mean, what I thought was be that this, we're just going to remove cottage altogether.
So we're changing what it says on it right now, so.
Correct.
That was why, that was why Mark tried to do the, you know, with the cottage removed. Language.
But that's still, that will still go to the hearing is the question.
That will go to the public hearing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which will, to just remove definition of cottage?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's still a change in the ordinance.
Right.
But don't you have to, uh, don't we have to see the new wording then, though? They're going to remove cottage?
Just, I kind of, didn't I strike it out? I'll go, I'll go find that document again. I thought I struck that language out.
I mean, basically, you're talking about redlining it right out.
Yes.
So there, there's not going to be anything under cottage, it's going to be eliminated, and then anywhere cottage appears. In the other five, pl- places in the ordinance, it's going to be struck. And those, those sections renumbered.
The amendment, the amendment, we will still have an amendment to article three definitions. The amendment is removing that language.
Right.
Okay.
All of it, not, and not adding the new obvious.
Modifying it, just removing it.
Right, right.
Oh, okay.
So the only language we don't have in front of us was that last one that Jeremy was talking about. Uh, which is pretty straightforward. Was that the permitted one, Jeremy? What was that?
Yeah, and this is, um, right here on number three. Um. Where it says, I, I'm, am I sharing my screen or no?
No.
When you say number three, it's, it's helpful if you say, I don't know, three little eyes or whatever.
I, I thought I was sharing my screen, I am sorry.
You were, but you stopped.
All right, and, and then we got to see your mug.
What'd you see?
Your mug.
All right. What'd you see?
Smiling face.
There you go. Let's go. All right, here we go, I think this is a Word document. Um, so in essence, um. I didn't do it yet, but I, so I have it in Word now. So this will be like this. Right? Oop. Gone.
Okay.
That will be gone and, um, let's see if I have anywhere, uh, maybe in the village extension where we did, okay, right here. So here's, this is an example, Pat, and so I have it done tomorrow, actually, because it needs to be available for Monday. Uh, for the public in order for the hearing. This, I'm going to go through village, not village, uh, CR. RU one, RU two, the village extension, I think that's the places. We're going to think, we're going to just strike cottages out. Out. Because they're allowed as dwellings already, so.
Okay.
Okay? That's the plan.
Yep.
And I'll send that all to you guys Monday morning or something, how's that?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. You want to do a vote? So, and this is to schedule a public hearing for. February, um. November seventeenth, oh, February seventeenth at five o'clock on Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, go ahead, you got it, Chris.
The, put forward the amendments. To articles three, five, six, eight and ten. To a public hearing on the seventeenth of February, two thousand twenty-two.
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock.
Here, we have a motion in a second. Uh, you can go ahead and stop sharing, Jeremy, uh, go around and take a roll call vote, so, Pat?
Wait, Jeremy, sorry, I'm being, uh. Dense here. Is there even, um, any revision to article three then?
Come on.
The revision is eliminating the definition of cottage.
Oh, oh, because we're, we're eliminating it, so that's the revision now, okay, yeah, okay, I'm good.
That's an I?
Yes, I.
Thanks, Mark?
I.
Chris O.
Hi.
And it's an I for me, so that's a four zero. To send the five, four, four ordinance amendments on to. A public hearing for the next scheduled meeting on the seventeenth.
Yep.
At five P M.
Yep.
And if Genie's out there, she got it. Everybody wait to Genie.
She has it forever, too. All right.
All right, uh, one more amendment, or one more, uh. Uh, motion needed. Anybody leaving my mind?
Motion to adjourn?
That's the one.
Uh, before we do, do we still need to, uh, come in and sign those?
You do. You do, I'll, I'll.
Are they ready?
I'm not sure they're right, ready, I know we.
Okay.
Had the language, um, the conditions. So. We nailed with that, we had to get that thing care of, so we'll let you know, I'll let you know soon. Okay?
Oh, uh, Jeremy, sign what?
Um, on the approvals the last time, the peer.
Um, oh, okay, right, because I didn't vote then.
Right.
Right, you just filled in for me briefly.
That's right, yeah, that's good, because I'm. Not here for February, okay.
Yeah, no, you won't need to, um, begin personally. But you'll be able to join us on the hearing, probably, Pat?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think so.
Good. All right.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Yep.